Good evening and welcome to the Ogden City Council meeting of Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Stevens, who was asked to be excused, and Chair Chaburka is joining us electronically. So, welcome to the meeting. Before we begin, I will read the Chair's determination statement. Bear with me as I read this. "Council Chair Determination to Hold Electronic Meetings Without Anchor Location. In accordance with Utah Code 52-3-207, I have determined that conducting meetings of the Ogden City Council with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present due to the infectious nature and potentially dangerous health effects of contracting the COVID-19 virus. This determination is based on the following: Utah has been in a declared state of emergency due to the novel coronavirus disease 2019 or COVID-19 since March 6, 2020. The World Health Organization has characterized the spread of COVID-19 as a pandemic. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention has determined that COVID-19 is easily spread between or among people who are in close contact with each other through airborne respiratory droplets and may be spread by people who are non-systematic. Federal, state, and local health authorities recommend limiting public gatherings, wearing face masks, and following social distancing guidelines; that those exposed to individuals experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self-quarantine for 14 days; and that individuals experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 self-isolate to prevent and control the continuing spread of COVID-19. Physical distancing measures are difficult to set up and maintain in the city council chambers. Based on the foregoing, and all public meetings, including work sessions and meetings of the Redevelopment Agency, will be held electronically through August 31st, 2020. Information on how to connect to the electronic public meetings will be posted on each agenda. The public may comment during the electronic meeting, during public hearings, or provide public input on items designated for input on the agenda. General public comments will also be taken during regular meetings. Written comments may also be submitted through the following electronic options: telephonic messages, public comment submission form@ogdencity.com-publicinput, or email thecity@ogdencity.com." This statement is issued and becomes effective August 3rd, 2020. So, thank you. Next up, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilmember Lopez has agreed to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, please, anyone who would like to rise and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. And now, we ask all those who would like to join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. First on our agenda are some recognitions. First, we have the Ogden Pride recognition, and Councilmember Nadolski has agreed to read that recognition. Perfect. Thank you, Vice Chair Blair. Hang on, my computer is struggling suddenly, of course. While you're pulling that up, I'm just going to read this little snippet to explain. This is recognizing Ogden Pride for their successful Ogden Pride Virtual Festival and support the LGBTQ+ community. Okay, thank you for the pause. Apologize for that. "The Ogden City Council and Mayor proudly recognize Ogden Pride for providing invaluable contributions to the Ogden community. Since 2014, Ogden Pride has celebrated and has supported the LGBTQ+ community by working to build and strengthen an inclusive community. Committed to excellence in advocacy, educational programs and services, Ogden Pride has touched countless lives by defending and promoting basic human rights, life, liberty, and freedom from violence and intimidation. Despite the current pandemic, Ogden Pride hosted their annual Ogden Pride Festival virtually to continue to facilitate opportunities for LGBTQ+ awareness and engagement in this cause. Ogden City is committed to treating all people fairly and with respect. We are grateful for dedicated advocates and allies who strive to forge a more inclusive society and who promote equality and foster understanding among people from all walks of life. We congratulate Ogden Pride on its mission and its efforts to make Ogden a welcoming place for everyone." And we present this recognition on this 25th day of August, 2020. And I believe we're joined by the Ogden Pride President, Brian Barnum. Brian, you there?
Yes, I am.
Well, thanks for joining us this evening.
Anytime.
I'll defer to the Chair from here. Thank you, and we'd love to hear from you if you'd like to share something.
Definitely, I'd like to thank the City of Ogden and the Ogden City Council, of course, for the recognition. And especially to my board, once COVID kind of hit, it kind of threw us into a whirlwind on how do we throw a festival without being able to be in person, and they never even had the thought of potentially canceling the festival. So, a huge shout out to them. We are still looking to hopefully build a center here in the near future when it's safe enough for us to build a home for the community and really provide that needed resource for everyone that is out there that could really utilize the support. But yes, thank you.
Did you have good support or a lot of people for the virtual festival, and maybe you want to share some highlights of it?
So, it's definitely hard to say numbers because with the virtual festival, we took tidbits of it and actually reposted it on our social media. And so, there's still portions of it out there actually being viewed and watched by the community still today, which is one huge benefit of the festival. During the festival itself, we probably had a consistent 15 to 20 people live at all times. You know, we had some wonderful performers. Some did it live, some did it pre-recorded, and then some wonderful sessions on how to really support your LGBTQ+ children to really just like doing some artwork at home.
Great. Well, I would just like to thank you for being here tonight and for all that you do for our community and for everyone, really. So, thanks so much. I don't know if anyone else has anything they'd like to add.
Vice Chair Blair, if I could, I wore my rainbow jacket tonight for this. I just want to say that this is a relatively young organization, and they have done so much work for Ogden City and for the LGBTQ+ community. And I just, you know, we talk a lot about our youth suicide rates are really high in Utah compared to other states in the country. And a lot of those suicides were youth that identified as LGBTQ+. And so, I just, I guess, coming from the relatively old lesbian, I just want to say that it warms my heart that to know that this organization is here and they're doing the advocacy work that is needed, not just in Ogden, but around in our, you know, our community or our larger or greater community. And I just really appreciate that there are people that can rely on Ogden Pride and the festival and those types of events and advocacy work that they do. So, I really appreciate it. And thank you, Brian, for leading us into a different era this year. But hopefully, next year, we can get back to another Pride Festival. So, thank you.
I do have one question for Brandon. Brandon, are we getting the recognition too, Brian, or?
Yes, it is signed. I just need to throw it in a frame, and then I will coordinate with Brian to make sure that that gets to Ogden Pride.
Perfect. Okay. Well, thanks again, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next resolution is a joint resolution encouraging masks, and Councilmember Lopez has agreed to read this.
Yes, Vice Chair, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to read this important resolution, challenging Ogden residents to wear masks in public to curb the spread of COVID-19 virus. Whereas COVID-19 continues to spread in our community and throughout the world, this has had devastating effects on our local economy and society. We must do our parts as a community to help curb the spread of COVID-19. To protect ourselves and others, Ogden City strongly encourages residents to wear masks in public areas. And whereas COVID-19 spreads primarily from person to person throughout respiratory droplets, when someone with the virus sneezes or coughs, these droplets are transmitted into the air, and anyone within six feet can breathe into their lungs. The virus gets into your lungs if you breathe in air that an infected person breathes at. And whereas masks are a powerful tool to help prevent the spread of COVID-19, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, there's evidence that wearing a mask over the nose and mouth significantly reduces the spread of droplets. Because of these, the CDC recommends that everyone wears a mask in public settings, especially where social distancing is not possible. And when around others who do not live in your household, children under two years old and those who have trouble breathing should not wear a mask. And whereas to slow the spread of the virus, Weaver County officials launched a Mask Up Weaver campaign encouraging citizens to wear masks. Ogden City strongly supports this campaign and strongly encourages its residents to follow its guidance. Doing so will accelerate the progress of recovery, have a significant impact on our economy, and will help us get to a new normal. And whereas with school back in session, it is imperative that members of our community wear masks to protect the well-being of our students. With complete cooperation from our residents, students will be able to safely return to the classroom, and families will feel comfortable sending their kids to school. And whereas Ogden City encourages its residents to wear masks in public where social distancing is not possible, these are unprecedented times, and we must work together to ensure that in our community feels healthy and safe. As we do our part to wear a mask, we can protect the health and welfare of our families, friends, and the community at large. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Ogden City Council and Mayor Michael P. Colville hereby commit to create a healthy environment where everyone feels safe and encourage all residents to wear masks in public. We appreciate the efforts of the Weaver Health Department and all others to promote health and safety within our community. Do I need to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Can I get a second? There we go. We have a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Councilmember White to adopt Joint Resolution 2020-4. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. And tonight, accepting this resolution, we have with us Brian Benyon from the Weaver Morgan Health Department.
Sorry, Vice Chair Blair, we actually do not have anyone receiving this resolution.
Oh, okay. Well, perfect. This was a good thing to get passed and a good step in just trying to lead by example. And I thank those that were instrumental in bringing this forward, and we'll get this resolution out to the Weaver Morgan Health Department. Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to add?
I just want to say, thanks, everybody, for supporting this resolution. And I feel really sad that Doug can't be here because he was really supportive and wanted this to happen. So, just wanted to say that.
Okay. Thank you. Then, on to the minutes. First, we have the work session of January 28th, 2020. Councilmember White.
I have read those, and these are correct.
Perfect. And the work session of April 7th, 2020. Councilmember Hare.
Yes, thank you. I have also reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate to the best of my recollection, and make a motion that we approve those minutes.
My second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes listed by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Lopez. This, too, is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you for reading those minutes and reporting on those. Next up is a request to be on the agenda, and it's the annual review from the Ogden City Natural Resources and Sustainability Stewardship Committee. And I believe we have Heather Root, the Council Chair, with us tonight.
Yeah.
Perfect. Welcome.
Thanks. I have a PowerPoint. Should I share my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you guys see it?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks. I'm new to this. All right. So, I am Heather Root, and I'm here to give the annual report of the Ogden Natural Resources and Sustainability Stewardship Committee. We have been calling ourselves ONRC because that's a really long name. So, let's see. We started last year in April, and we started by thinking about like, what is sustainability, sort of thinking broadly, what are we doing here? And we've been thinking about this as meeting our current community needs without sacrificing the needs of future generations in this idea, this paradigm that's typical in the sustainability literature, that the environment supports society, which supports our economy. So, we've been trying to think about it through that lens. We're really excited to be in Ogden, which is a place that has a lot of awesome natural resources, like climbing and hiking and camping and awesome mountains. And we've been thinking about the water and how that's related to the mountains. And let's see, the community and social resources. And one of the things we've worked on this year is establishing connections with community partners and thinking about the social resources and how they fit together with our natural resources. So, this is a picture of when we first started, and you can see that we're made of people with a wide range of ages. There's three high school students. We come from, I think, all the districts in the city. And there's a wide range of expertise. There are 12 members on our committee. The purpose that was given to us is to advise the council and mayor on matters related to citizen education programs, related to sustainable environmental practices, and responsible stewardship of the city's natural resources. And we keep coming back to those to remind us of our mission. So, we're glad that you gave us these core purposes to refer back to. Here's a picture of one of our first, when we got to meet you all and meet the mayor. That was pretty cool. So, in this first year, we've really spent a lot of time trying to figure out what the heck is going on, like, what are the natural resources? How are they already managed? This is a picture of us touring the water treatment plant up at Pineview. And we realized we really needed to make subcommittees because there's a lot of components going on. So, we prioritized some areas to focus subcommittees on. We have seven of them: education and community outreach, government-private partnership, air quality and climate, water quality, supply and conservation, solid and hazardous waste, sustainable energy, and open spaces. So, we've kind of taken the expertise within the committee and divided it up into trying to learn about all of those areas of natural resources and sustainability within Ogden. Just as we started to meet, this community renewable energy program came on board, and it was clear that there was a timeline involved, and we needed to learn about it and address it. So, we listened to input from dozens of residents at our meetings. We researched the Community Renewable Energy Act and learned about the rate-making structure and the various technologies and cost trends. We listened to three presentations by experts in the program, and we provided a unanimous recommendation in favor of this program. And we expect that we will continue to be involved as the program unfolds and there are decision points and things that need to be worked out as we work through. But one of our accomplishments is, at first, recommending that we consider this path. Another one is we've been involved with the Utah Energy Wise Communities Plan, and this is a planning effort headed up by Utah Clean Energy to increase efficiency. And Ogden's kind of one of the flagship cities for this plan. And we participated in three presentations from Utah Clean Energy staff related to this project. We provided written verbal feedback to the planners. We reviewed the various plans and goals, and throughout, we suggested some stronger goals or ways to implement them. And we expect that we'll be continuing to support the rollout of this energy efficiency plan. So, this will be ongoing, but the plan is in place now. So, that part has been finished. Our current projects and work involve responding to your request for air quality improvement recommendations. We're working on that right now. It was a very broad request you put out a few months ago. We have some drafts and ideas. We are continuing collaboration with the efficiency projects. We're working on developing more outlets for educational materials, and we're collaborating with staff on figuring out how to do that within the city framework. We're also collaborating with staff to develop recommendations about open space, and in particular, our open space committee has been talking about park strips. Each subcommittee with their particular expertise has spent a lot of time researching what's happening in that area, thinking about how we can plan to be more resilient and what the industry best practices are. So, as they become familiar with the industry best practices, we'll probably see more suggestions related to each of those subcommittees. Okay. Oh, and we recently got a joint cooperation statement request from Dominion Energy, and we've been working with one of their staff, her name is Raina, on figuring out what that would look like if we made a cooperative agreement with them and how that would serve the city and how that has happened in other cities. So, that's another ongoing project. Let's see, future plans and goals. We will continue to provide recommendations that you request. We liked that. We'll keep working on that kind of thing. We want to continue education and outreach programs in the hopes of developing more of a culture of sustainability awareness in Ogden among residents and staff. And now that we have kind of a sense of what we're doing and what is available to us, I think our next step is developing more of a strategic vision. We have not had a chance to do that yet. And I would really like to see in this next year, developing sort of a long-term framework for how we can prioritize recommendations so that they're in line with what the city needs to do, they're likely to have public support, and they're likely to be efficient. So, that long-term framework is one of our next steps in this coming year. So, thanks for listening to me. I guess I get questions, maybe? Yeah, I'm glad I got to tell you what we're doing, though.
Yes, thank you for that report. Does anyone have any questions for Heather? Or comments?
I just want to say thank you real quick, Heather, for the great presentation and for the great work that you and your colleagues are doing. Very important service for the city. So, I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that really stuck out to me was how quick things changed. Just a year ago, we were all there taking a picture together and shaking hands, and now, here we are on Zoom. So, it's a different world for sure, but we appreciate everything that you're doing and all the work that you're doing to provide us with more information and best practices. So, thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
I don't know if there's any others.
Just a real quick comment. Heather, sorry for the long name of the committee. I don't know. That was a, I think that was a collaboration of, I don't know what. Anyways, one of the things that I started out by, I know you've probably heard this story, but I started out trying to convince my other council members that this group, all they would do would be to, you know, help educate maybe around recycling or those kind of things. And you have far exceeded within this year any vision that I could have ever come up with. So, thank you for your work. Thank you for all you're doing. And I look forward to actually helping set some new policy within Ogden. So, again, my vision was never to have that, but I really, really see that it's going to have some really great impacts and policy impacts in Ogden. So, thank you for all you're doing.
Great. Thank you, Councilperson White. We really have a lot of enthusiasm in our committee. So, I think you're totally right.
Vice Chair, I have just one question. Thank you. Since you mentioned that enthusiasm, I was curious if there is a certain component or subcommittee or topic that has kind of garnered the most enthusiasm from the committee?
I think right now, the air quality and sustainability, right, are the most enthusiastic. We also, the outreach subcommittee has the most people and is the most enthusiastic and has had the most challenges figuring out how to disseminate, especially during the pandemic. So, they totally want to do more outreach, and they're trying to figure out how to do it. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, this is Angela, and again, I apologize I'm not there in person. I really, you know, want to, you know, send you appreciation and to all the committee members for all the work that you've been doing. I just have a kind of a follow-up question about the outreach. I was wondering, you know, what role do you see or do you think the committee can play in helping? I mean, we kind of have a crisis around recycling issue, right? And I know it's not, I mean, we have a pandemic also. So, I'm putting that in the context there, right, of these things. But what role or how do you think we can activate the committee when we kind of come into a situation like that where it's kind of sudden? I know that you've done such great due diligence around different topics that you're working on, but I mean, do you have any thoughts about that, that how we help, how can we help support so that the committee can kind of be activated quickly around some of these issues?
That's a really good question, and it's one we have thought about internally, particularly because of the way the recycling thing played out. We kind of didn't really see it coming. And we have struggled internally to figure out, well, we don't want to speak as individuals because we have a responsibility in the committee to speak as a committee, but that slows things down. So, I don't know how to balance that sense of wanting to respectfully represent the city's interests as a whole and also respond quickly. I think that's something we need to figure out a little bit more clearly and maybe sort of plan ahead for how we would handle the next situation like that. So, that's a really good question.
Great. Well? Yeah, I would just follow up by saying, if there's anything we can do to help as a council, you know, to support you in doing that, you know, if you come across them, they let us know.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks a lot.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all the work that you're doing, and we appreciate it. Thanks so much. Well, thank you for being here tonight and thank you for all the work that you're doing and we appreciate it. Thanks so much.
All right. Thanks, Heather.
Okay. Um, next up, we have two items listed under common consent. Uh, first is diversity commission appointments. And second is a fiscal year 2021 budget amendment. Um, setting the public hearing for September 15th, 2020.
Vice Chair, I would make a motion that we adopt the common consent items.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Lopez and a second by Councilmember Hire to adopt the two items listed under common consent. And set the public hearing for September 15th, 2020. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Um, next up is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding concerns or ideas on any topic. Um, I, should we, Brandon, I believe this is where Angela or Chair Trubka has you kind of list out the guidelines of how that will play out.
Absolutely. And I'm happy to do so. So for those of, uh, you who are, are joining us tonight via Zoom. You can participate in public comments by using the raise hand feature found within the application, which is down at the bottom of the screen. Um, just raise your hand and that will put you in the queue. And we ask that you state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Did we have anyone on there, Brandon?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Uh, Heath Sato, uh, the time is yours. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, Heath Sato, Ogden City resident. Um, uh, good timing on all this stuff. I, uh, I read over the recycling update presented to the work session today and noticed that the date the city says the program was suspended was March 3rd. It was 19 weeks later on July 13th, when the city issued a press release about this. Press releases are created to allow the press to inform citizens of what you're up to. But what was not mentioned in the recycling update is that this press release was issued almost a week after the newspaper article came out about the city's problem with recycling. It's also my understanding that the Sustainability Stewardship Committee that you just spoke to was first informed of this by that same newspaper article. Issuing press releases only after you've been busted by the local newspapers, not how good government should work. I would like to request that this administration, one, be more transparent on literally every issue, particularly when they find the information embarrassing. Treat us like adults. We can handle the truth. And two, actually use your committees to help you make better decisions. Allow me to read a shortened version of the duties of the Sustainability Stewardship Committee as stated by the Ogden City website mentioned earlier. The members of this committee provide policy and program recommendations and advise the council and mayor regarding waste reduction and recycling. How are committees supposed to advise the council and mayor if they are left completely in the dark? Please use your committees more wisely. This is not the first time I've heard about this administration using the various committees as a rubber stamp at best and at worst, completely ignoring the recommendations and removing members that don't tell them exactly what they want to hear. Please use your committees properly or let's stop pretending they have any real purpose in our government. We deserve better than political theater. And the second issue I wanted to address today was I've had to call 911 twice in the last two weeks to report very large, dangerous asphalt and concrete chunks on the 24th Street viaduct. That have literally been lifted up and out into the roadway by vehicles. Some of them appear to be as large as two feet by one foot by one foot. Last I heard, UDOT would be doing eight and a half million dollars of repairs in 2020 on the viaduct. It's now almost September. I see no indication of those repairs being started. This bridge is becoming very dangerous and I'm concerned someone could be hurt or killed if the bridge keeps deteriorating at this rate. I know this is a UDOT issue, but I'm hoping someone on the council can push the importance of this to the right people. Thank you for your time and thanks to the council for discussing the recycling issue today.
Thank you, Heath. We'll just wait for you, Brandon, and let us know if there's anyone else.
There are no, oh, I, I take that back. I was about to say we had no more hand raised, but we do. Uh, Angel Castillo, the time is yours. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Angel Castillo, Ogden resident. Um, thanks to all the council members for talking about the recycling issue during work sessions. It's really important. And I'm glad that we're giving it the attention that it needs. I would like to echo Councilman Hire's recommendation to really be involved in what's coming down the pipe for the planning commission meeting. It's, it's, it's a big topic. It's very complex and there's lots of nuances to it. And the planning commission wasn't a hundred percent comfortable with, um, where they were. They needed more time. So I, I'd like to, if you can, to make sure that you're going to listen to the recording or listen live if you, if you can. Because the decisions that the C2, C3 multifamily ordinance, um, is going to affect are going to have huge ramifications on Ogden. As far as where we're going to be living and where we can move people, um, in multifamily housing on transit lines and doing everything that we want to do with the sustainability committee, uh, getting people out of cars and getting them to use public transportation and having those residents support the surrounding businesses. So I know you've got a lot on your plate and I know your pre-meeting packets are hundreds of pages and we've got a lot going on. But, um, please, if you can, really make an effort to be well-prepared on the ordinance as it's coming down because it's very, very important. And, um, member Hire being a former planning commissioner, if he's needing more time with it, I know for a fact that everybody else is going to without his type of experience. So please make an effort to do that. Thank you so much. I really appreciate everything that you do and have a good night.
Thanks, Angel.
Vice Chair Blair, at the time, there are no hands raised.
Okay. With that being said, I suggest we move ahead to, um, comments from the mayor or administration.
Yeah, I'll just give a couple of quick comments. I really appreciate Jay. And this has been an impossible position for him to be in with all of the dynamics of the markets and everything else that's happening with recycling. Jay, we really appreciate all the work that you've put into this and that your people have put into this and your presentation tonight. Thank you very much for that. And, uh, other than that, I'm, uh, I'm going to let it go.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, comments from other council members? Anyone?
Did, did anybody notice my rainbow jacket?
You know, it doesn't look that rainbow. It looks a little plattish, but it's just the video, I'm sure.
Right. If we were in person, we would, you would be like, oh my gosh, that's total cool.
I do like the thought process of always trying to, trying to coordinate the outfit for the, the agenda. It's impressive. But, okay, if there's nothing else, then I would say we take advantage of a shorter agenda and adjourn.
Okay. Acting Chair Blair, I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Hire and a second from Councilmember Nadolski to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Hey, thanks, guys. Thanks, Bert.
Bye, everybody.
Goodbye. Have a safe Angela.